Go ahead and call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, August 13th. To order, will you please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag-
...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, without any injustice or wrong.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming out. Again, reminder, please make sure that you silence or turn off your cellphone, and we'll go ahead and get things rolling and do roll call.
Stephenson-
Here.
Carey-
Here.
Davis-
Here.
Latham-
Here.
Bishop-
Here.
Hampi-
Here.
Any amendments to the agenda this evening? No amendments? Okay. Ceremonies, announcements, appointments, and/or presentations? Nothing? Alright. Declaration of Conflict. Anybody have a-
No.
Declaration? We will make note that Commissioner Kimball is not up front, as he will be involved as a presenter this evening, so he is going to set this one out. Consent Calendar. Bob, do we have anything to go through with that?
The action items tonight, we've got A, the minutes of July 9th, 2019, B, Crown Enterprises' file number USC-0032019, reasoned decision, C, Landmark Place Annexation File Number ANNX-0032019, reasoned decision, D, Prairie and Spokane Street Annexation File Number ANNX-0042019, reasoned decision, and E, the Nelson Williams Annexation File Number ANNX-0052019, reasoned decision.
Alright, hopefully everybody had an opportunity to take a look at the consent calendar, and if so, I would look for a motion.
I move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Seconded.
Have had a motion seconded, so call for a vote.
Hampi-
Yes.
Bishop-
Yes.
Latham-
Abstain.
Davis-
Yes.
Carey-
Yes.
Stephenson-
Yes.
Alright. Next item on this evening's agenda is Citizen Issues. This section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the commission on an issue that is not on the agenda. Comments on issues that are planned for future meetings and agenda should also be held for that meeting. Anyone this evening wishing to speak on a non-related item to this evening? Okay, none being seen, we will move on. We have no unfinished or old business, so that would take us right into the public hearings. We'll go ahead and open up with the first one. And Jamie, correct me, what is the enunciation that we are using for this evening?
Bell Cielo.
Bell Cielo, okay.
Well, good evening Commissioners, my name is Jamie Hayes. I'm a Planner One of the Community Development Department, here to present the Bell Cielo Phase III Annexation, case file ANNX-7-2019. The owner is Bell Cielo III LLC, and the applicant is Lake City Engineering. The Planning and Zoning Commission is being asked to review the annexation request of approximately 4.84 acres, and to make a recommendation of the proposed high-density, multifamily, R3-zone residential designation to City Council. The subject site you see is hatched in red, and you can see we have East 16th Avenue, which is a major collector, running east and west. We have a principal arterial which is Highway 41, running north and south, which is about a quarter of a mile away from the subject site. To give you a little perspective of the built environment here, we have a Goodwill industry right here, Phase 1 of Bell Cielo, and even though the looks semi-vacant, there's the Phase 2 of Bell Cielo, which is currently being constructed. The proposal, we have multi- or it's residential mobile homes to the east and to the south. The current land use is designated ad agricultural by Cootney County. It's vacant with no significant topology or vegetation. Water is provided by Ross Point Water District, and the sewer is provided by City of Post Falls. There are six elements in the zone change criteria. One, is it consistent with the future land use map, which I will show you in just a moment, whether it's consistent with the goals and policies found in the comprehensive plan. I will not go all over all of the goals and policies that it is consistent with, but we are going to look at things such as, is it consistent with the transportation network? Does it fit in with the overall built environment and zoning that exists? Does it create walkable environments, pedestrian-friendly environments? And such things as, if it's a good idea to have multifamily in, as our comprehensive plan suggests. Zoning is assigned following consideration of such items as street classifications, which we went over with 16th Avenue being a major collector and Highway 41 being a principal arterial, traffic patterns, existing development, future land uses, community plans, geographic or natural features, which are not an issue for this proposal, and whether it encourages a balance of land uses to help Post Falls remain a desirable, stable, and sustainable community. This is the current zoning. In red, you can see this is designated as commercial. This orange color is multifamily R3 designation. We have R2 in kind of the burnt orange, yellow, and then single-family to the south. The future land use designates the subject site as residential, and everything in red is designated as commercial on the future land use map. Some of the other criteria is whether the commercial and high-density residential zoning is typically assigned along streets with higher road classifications, such as 16th and Highway 41. Limited or neighborhood commercial and lower-density residential zoning is typically assigned for properties as they proceed further away from the higher-density urban activity. This could be relevant in the fact that multifamily is typically two or three stories high, and some may see it as a way to buffer the interior lower residential zoning. And this is, the industrial zoning is typically assigned for properties with sufficient access to major transportation routes, is not applicable considering this is an R3 request. There is all the agencies routed. Cootney County Fire and Rescue and Post Falls Police Department both remain neutral on the proposed project. And once again, there's the overall vicinity map. I should also add that in the comprehensive plan, we like to zone things so that people have access to amenities and make, create walkable neighborhoods. Do you have any questions or comments?
What's on the property to the east?
To the east is residential mobile homes.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Hi, so it's zoned high-density by Cootney County, which allows 14 and 1/2 units per acre.
Okay. Per acre, okay. Any other questions for staff? None?
No.
Okay. Jamie, thank you. Applicant.
Good evening Chairman Davis, fellow Commissioners, Drew Dittman, Lake City Engineering, 126 East Poplar in the city of Coeur d'Alene. For the record, Bell Cielo III, that's how I pronounce it, I'm not sure if that is correct or not, I'm not Italian, but that's what I'm going with. You see, properties outlined here in red, I was before you guys, about almost a year ago to the date, we annexed Bell Cielo II, if you remember that, as R3. So you've got Bell Cielo I apartments here, the Bell Cielo II apartments are currently under construction, and this would be Phase 3 of the project, Bell Cielo III. So this would be 16th that runs east-west, and Highway 41 that runs north-south. Here's a copy of the zoning map, so again, the proposed property is right here. You've got Phase 2 apartments are zoned R3, Phase 1 is actually zoned commercial, and then you've got commercial all surrounding it through the Highway 41 corridor, you've got R3 to the north, some ag sub in the county here, and then as Jamie talked about, you have the two mobile home parks that are designated high-density residential in Cootney County. So as you guys know, and you've heard me give this spiel before, as I've been in front of you, Title 18 of your code outlines and gives you guys the zoning criteria. They're on page one of the staff report, I'm sure you guys have read it. Basically, as Jamie said, is it in conformance with your comp plan? Is the proposal in conformance with your master and your strategic plans? And is it consistent with the surrounding land uses? Is it a good fit overall? We think so, obviously that's why we're here tonight. So R3 zoning, it meets the criteria in your Title 18 code, it's discussed in the staff report, it was discussed in the narrative that we've submitted. Is it conformance with the comp plan? Yes, again, there's a comp plan analysis in the file that we submitted, there's one also in the staff report. The future land use map designates this as residential, and again, it's outlined, the applicable goals and policies are outlined in the staff report. It is in conformance with the transportation master plan, that area was considered 16th Street as a major collector, and obviously Highway 41 is a major highway principal arterial. It's also in conformance with the wastewater master plan, and we know that currently there isn't sewer service to the property, we're going to have to go to the south and get it and bring it to the property, we're aware of that, but that's in accordance with your master plan, and we understand that. And then finally, is it consistent with your surrounding land uses? Obviously, if you go back, go back to the one slide, you know, you've got Phase 1 and Phase 2 of the apartments to the west, you've got the mobile home parks to the south and to the east, and then you've got more high-density residential to the north, so it fits with the surrounding land uses. With that, I think I'm going to stand for any questions.
Does 16th Avenue narrow? I mean, it looks from that, but it actually narrows a bit.
Yeah, because we're not, and I apologize, this map doesn't show the right-of-way. So when Phase 2 was annexed, additional right-of-way was dedicated. We'll have to dedicate additional right-of-way with this annexation as well.
So the road will become wider?
The road will become wider, correct.
Okay.
Hang, hang on just for a second, let's direct all of our questions when you come up front.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Nope, you're fine. Yeah, no, that's fine. That way we can get it all recorded. Thank you.
And Drew, there will be a sidewalk that goes all the way across to-
There will be a sidewalk on the south side of 16th Avenue that goes all the way over to Highway 41.
All the way to the mobile home park, not through it, but to it.
No, it'll go across our front edge, and there's already one across Phase 2 and across Phase 1, and then in front of the Goodwill.
Okay, good.
Any other questions for Mr. Dittman? Okay?
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Public comment. In favor, neutral, and against, we can take them all?
Okay.
Okay. Alright, so we have one in favor that has already spoke. Mr. Dittman, anything else to add with that? Okay, for the record, in favor. We have three individuals, one that wishes to speak, two that do not. Anton, how do you pronounce your last name? Nenchev. Nenchev, in opposition, and is against. We've got Anna Hayes and Kent Hayes, do not wish to speak. Current road infrastructure is not adequate to handle the increased vehicular traffic created by this, and already approved developments at the location will adversely impact the safety of Post Falls, need to utilize I-90, Highway 41, and 16th Avenue. The second piece of that is the proposed development is unsightly and adversely affects the residential, the nature, and the characteristics of the surrounding community. And lastly, in opposition, wishing to speak, June Peterson. June, if you would come to the front, just state your name and your address.
My name is June Peterson.
Yep, you can come right up to the front. And sir, if you wish to speak as well, you can fill out one of those, and you can come up and speak as well. They're right in the back.
My name is June Peterson, and I've lived on 16th Street since 1973.
Okay.
So what they're proposing, and they keep saying that it's high-density, and there are some mobile homes there, but there's also a lot of single-family homes that are further down the road, like within a half a mile. And we are really, in fact, the street is horrible for traffic. We can't hardly get onto Highway 41 now, and if we bring in more, when, that road doesn't support it. We have the two-lane road, they did put a little bit in the beginning where the, and that was after I called and said, you guys, there's no lines here. People are driving all over the road, they don't know what they're doing, and I've almost been hit there twice, and it's very dangerous. And it's just too many people in a small confined area that we're going to end up with rat syndrome. You know, seriously, it is not healthy. And there's cars that are on the road, left, there was one that I called police on last week, and they picked up because it was flat, had a flat tire from winter, and people left it there. There were two cars, one finally did move its own. They park right next to where the driveways are to go into the Goodwill and into the apartments, so, and that's not adequate. You can't see coming out of some of those places. And it's just, it does not support it. You know, like I said, I've been there since 73, and it has really, I would have been here on the first one had they had a sign out for the Annex 1, but they didn't have one out in time, so I missed it. And I've been calling and talking to Planning and Zoning about this for, ever since they did this. And we were told we were going to have a light at Highway 41 a long time back, when they put in the fire department. We never got a light. Then they told me last year that we would have one this year. I called again, they said, no, it'll be next year, whatever. We keep getting put off, and it's very dangerous, and then you want to bring more people in? It's not a healthy environment, and I hope you guys reconsider letting it go in, because it's not good. Just too many, I don't know how many units they're talking about this time. I don't know how many was put in the first time or the second time. Do you know that?
We'll give the applicant an opportunity for rebuttal at the end, they can answer that question.
But it is, it's not conducive to families living there. You know, it's not fair. So...
Okay. June, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have another one? Alright, also, I'm assuming in opposition, in opposition wishing to speak, David, if you would just come up to the front, state your name and your address.
Yeah, my name is David Chenault, I live at 1505 North Heide Court, and that's about half a mile down the road from where this proposed project's going to be. And again, I'm, I just have lived there since 2008, and I can just see since the, two years ago when the proposed annexation went in for the Goodwill, and then for the Cielo LLC first phase, and now the second phase is going in. The first phase and the Goodwill has just created a tremendous amount of log jam and backup at that intersection of 16th and 41. It's a major arterial. We all know that the whole area is growing like gangbusters, so without having a signal light there, it's very unsafe to try to get out on, from 16th Avenue onto Highway 41 in either direction at pretty much any time of the day anymore, between people wanting to hurry and try to get into the Goodwill, because that's there, and I don't understand why there wasn't a signal put in while the Goodwill went in. You know, you're adding commercial projects, that people are going to come and go to, which is already there. I understand that this isn't what this meeting's about, but between the traffic that's been increased since that, and now the apartments and the people are already parking on the street right there at that, close to that intersection for the Cielo 1 that's already there, so Cielo 2, you're going to have more people parking on the streets. If you let Cielo 3, and there's going to be even more people parking on the streets, and if you put sidewalks in, that's fine, they can go from a quarter of a mile away from Highway 41 to 41. 41 has no sidewalks. So where do pedestrians go from there? They just walk up the street and walk back down the street? The sidewalk isn't really, isn't doing anything to try to make the area safe. I have a new driver in my household, my daughter who's 16, we don't let her go that way. We make her go all the way up and around over to Pole Line, which is about a, probably a two-mile out-of-the-way run, just so she can avoid that intersection. It's just not, it needs to have a signal light if one, if they're going to do this, it needs a signal light before the apartments are built, before they're occupied, before more traffic comes. The unsightliness of it, you know, we all see apartments are popping up everywhere, I don't understand why, but they're really are pretty unsightly compared to, you can look at the map and see that there is a high-density residential mobile home park next to it, and one behind it, but other than that, you pass those up, and everything is just rural. It's all spread out, everybody's on a little bit of acreage, everything is just, it's just not the same. You have this little commercial, new development right there at the beginning of the street, and once you pass that, it's all, just feels like you're back into the old days, if, you know, if I could say that, I mean. And, and, you know, like June had pointed out, if you cross 16th heading east at 41, if you're on 16th, and you come to Highway 41, you have two lanes. One lane is marked with a left-turn lane, one lane is marked with a right-turn lane. The person that's going to go straight across 16th doesn't really have a designated lane to even use, the way that the road is set up now, because you only have two lanes and it's, it's a two-lane road. So, and you have three different ways that people can go, and it's the same way on 16th Street. If you're traveling 16th heading west, you get to Highway 41, there is no designated left-turn lane, no designated right-turn lane, no designated straight-turn lane. You pull up and you just make your way however you can get through. And it's just, it's really just a big cluster of stuff there, and I don't know what's proposed for 41 in the future, but I think that all needs to be taken care of and be in place and up and running before they add any more bit of any traffic or any more, you know, apartments. And I'm against that, as far as that goes. We're going to get growth, that's what happens in a nice area, but, you know, that's just my voice and my opinion on it, so I am against it.
Okay, thank you very much, sir, appreciate that. Any others? Okay. Applicant, come up for rebuttal.
Chairman Davis, again, Drew Dittman, Lake City Engineering, for the record. I want to back up and explain this a little bit. So Phase 1 and Phase 2 of the apartments, there's a combined, I think there's 180 units between Phase 1 and Phase 2. Phase 2 is currently under construction, won't be complete until the spring of next year. So although I say there's 180 units, there's not 180 units built today. We don't really have a plan yet at this time for Phase 3, the annexation that's in front of you. We didn't want to get out too far in front of our ski tip, so started with the annexation, see if we can get the zoning, and then we'll move forward. I don't know if it's going to be apartments, I don't know if it's going to be duplexes, triplexes, or some, something like that. We haven't figured that out yet. We got a lot of issues with this, not a lot of issues, some hoops to jump through, off-site sewer, like I talked about earlier, that's got to be extended. We've also got a north-south baggage road that has got to go in, so all of that weighs into development and what we can and can't do with the property. I'll defer some of the traffic questions to Bill, and I don't know if he wants to speak on that. The signal at 16th and 41, Bill, that's next year, if I'm not mistaken? You, okay.
Yeah, I'll bring him, we'll bring him.
Bill can talk about that, an ITD schedule to put that in, and Bill can talk about parking on 16th and stuff like that, so I won't, I won't address that. As far as apartments being unsightly, that's a preference, and I don't want to debate that at all. And then the road striping on the turn, and again, I'll let Bill address that, he probably knows more about that than I do, but I can tell you, when Highway 41 gets improved, all of those problems are probably going to go away with the signal going in and the restriping of the roads and the reconfiguring, and from my understanding, that's slated next year, but Bill can update us a little more on that. Any questions for me?
Actually, yeah, kind of to tie into what you were mentioning, once the sewer improvements are in, I mean realistically, when do you think you would be breaking ground on Phase 3?
If we had a plan today, that, you know, we get annexed, we go to council, we get annexed, we come back with a plan, get through that process, get through plan review, I mean, we'd be lucky to break ground next summer, at maybe end of next spring, just timing-wise, how long it takes to get through the process and get plans designed and approved through staff and whatnot. I mean, that's best-case scenario, break ground late spring, early summer next year, and then you're looking at a year to build out, so on a project that size.
Okay. Do you have a question as well?
No.
No?
He answered it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Melvin, do you want to come up and address ITD schedule, road striping, stoplights?
Right. Thank you, Commission members, Bill Melvin, City Engineer. The Idaho Transportation Department has a project to widen Highway 41, that their proposal is to begin next spring, 2020. It is, they're investing $40 million to widen Highway 41 from Mullen Avenue up through Rathfrum, to accommodate the local regional growth. There is a signal in their project within their plans for 16th Avenue, so they would do some widening on 16th and construct a signal at that time. I would imagine that we would be in the 2021 timeframe till that signal is activated and fully functional. That, so that's the timeframe that they have going on with them right now with the Idaho Transportation Department. So we've seen those plans, we reviewed those plans, and there's, you know, they definitely have that signal within there, they're in their right-of-way, final right-of-way acquisition phase of their project at this point. The parking on 16th Avenue is something I want to take a look into, and see if we have a code enforcement issue, or really what's going on up there with parking. I'll go up on the side or have somebody in the engineering staff go up and take a look at that, see what's going on, see if maybe we need to eliminate parking, on-street parking along 16th, and what that issue is. I can't speak, you know, directly to it, I'm not really familiar with what's been the issue with parking, but if we need to clear, clean that up right now, that might be able to help and alleviate the situation that we've got there. One of the things additionally, that the project is proposing to do is to, is to construct a north-south baggage road. So we have baggage road systems that run parallel to Highway 41 that are both east and west, a quarter-mile and a half-mile back from Highway 41, that will allow people then to access, you know, signalized intersections to be able to spread traffic more locally, so they're not having to use Highway 41. And this proponent would carry the portion of their baggage road with their project. They understand that requirement to do so, so that is something else that they would be constructing to help long-term alleviate the plan and put into a place for long-term regional transportation plans for that corridor. Does that answer your questions?
I think so, and just to kind of reiterate, Bill, Bill, while you're still up here, Sam, to address that, so we're looking, obviously, we are way ahead of ourselves here, but if we're looking at third phase, and we're looking at 2021, more than likely, we're looking at the 41 improvements, the stoplight at 16 would almost be simultaneous with that project.
I'm hoping they would coincide, yes.
Yes, in the ballpark.
You know, as, as was mentioned, we're just at annexation at this time, we don't have a set of plans approved.
We're not holding anybody to it, but just, yeah.
You know, you're probably looking at the first of the year until annexation is even, you know, completely wrapped up and filed with the city, so.
Any other questions?
A lot of the lines of the parking, I know that was a concern of this gentleman here. How soon do you think you could maybe have some, some sort of information or details on that?
Oh, we'll have somebody within a week out there taking a look at the parking, and also taking a look at the striping situation. I'm, I can't speak to every stripe on every intersection in town, so that's something else that we'll take a look at, as well as the parking and the striping out there. So, within a week, we'll have somebody out there take a look at it and figure out how we're going to address that.
Perfect, we'll allow you guys to discuss that offline. Any other questions for Bill? Yeah?
Just one, with the right-of-way that's proposed, how much wider will the road be?
On, on 16th Avenue?
Yeah.
So on 16th Avenue, we should be having a, I believe it's a 40-foot total roadway, so you would have three lanes, you know, travel lane in each direction, and a center-turn lane would be that roadway once it's ultimately built out.
When would that be?
Well, it's being built, it'll be- Um, well, it's being built, it'll be, the intersection will be widened with the Highway forty-one project, the rest of the widening is occurring as development occurs. So, as the, as the goodwill and the first and second phases have done, they've built their frontage improvements, so developers required to come in, they build center line, you know, plus so much on the other side of the, of the street. So, when development happens, that's when development is, when those, when things are widening, so if fairway floors and some of the other vacant properties on the north side of Sixteenth develop, they'll complete their frontage improvements, so it's, it's development.
Can you tell me a little more about the backing road? Like, how far, if I'm looking at that map right there, where would it, where would the quarter-mile?
So, the, the quarter-mile, the quarter-mile road is almost at the, um, would be really close to probably the very east and the proposed R-three.
Okay.
And, and so there's, there's a road that, that runs, um, you know, that we're trying to connect, we can't get them all to Mullen, but we're trying to connect mostly from Mullen Avenue all the way beyond Prairie Avenue with a quarter and a half mile baggage road, like I said, both east and west. That's been in the Highway forty-one, forty-one plan for, um, quite a few years.
Okay, so at the same time that they're improving Highway forty-one, those improvements would be happening?
Those improvements will also be done by development, so as
Okay.
As Phase Three develops, they have an obligation to construct their portion of
Just their portion?
Their portion of it.
Okay.
Then as anybody else develops, that'll be constructed as well, so that.
So, it would kinda be a road to nowhere, basically, though? Would it, until somebody else developed? If, if just the proposed applicant is?
It will eventually, it will eventually, um, hopefully go to twelfth, and as they need to construct sanitary sewer through there, there might be a possibility that we can get a right-of-way or an easement. It, it, as we are growing, we can't build out the entire city in one full swoop. We do have roads that terminate and will be extended, a road to nowhere, you might call it.
Okay.
But, but obviously, that's how growth and development matters.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions?
No.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for staff?
No.
None? Okay. Go ahead and close the hearing, I'll open it up for comment.
Okay, I will, I'll start. Um, I really, I understand the traffic problem, there is a lot of traffic there, and a hundred and eighty units in the two phases is a lot of units already. Um, I just, I would like to see that annexed in at a smaller density, and as a, an R-two or something rather than an R-three. Also would make a buffer between the mobile homes and the, um, apartments, um, and less people, less density, because if we're looking at, still, we're looking at a couple of years before we can get any traffic alleviation there, and, um, I think that would, uh, if this gets built out R-three before that, we're gonna have a lot more people there, and I think, I do think that traffic is an issue at this, at this point, it does, the streets just do not substantiate having that much more traffic on them.
I, I was concerned with the traffic at the last request, um, a year ago, and I think I'm definitely even more so now, and I, I, I don't so much mind the apartments or an R-three designation there, once I think the infrastructure can handle it.
Anyone else?
I think that, I think the infrastructure's gonna say, yeah, go hand-in-hand with the development of the apartments. It's supposed to, I mean, in a perfect world, nothing happens perfectly with development, and we talked about roads to nowhere and things like that, but ultimately, the goal is that it does all work out as well as possible. Um, it is an R-three, I mean, that is a dense, um, zoning designation, and our, we're tasked not with how many apartments are gonna go in there, and how many stories, and what the layout of the site is, but, um, just the R-three versus another zoning designation like R-two or R-one. But it is high-density residential in the county to the east and to the south, so basically contiguous to it. Out to the north, it's ex-suburban, but that's across the road, and so I actually don't have any issues with the project, or, or, I'm, I'm sorry, with the annexation request.
Sam? James?
Yeah, I mean, I think the traffic is a concern, but it's, if timing goes like it is, it should alleviate the traffic in due time. I mean, if Phase Two is just beginning to work on, and we looked at that a year ago, you know, Drew said if everything goes well, there not a perfect world, summer of next year, so then you're looking twenty-twenty-one before this one even gets started, and hopefully that runs in line with the improvements to Highway forty-one and sixteen, the light and everything. Um, but, you know, we'll see how everything works out.
Sam? Anything? Okay. Yeah, I mean, that's unfortunately, it's, it's part of, of growing pains. Um, we, we, we have to, as Mr. Latham, um, kind of alluded to, the growth brings the development and the improvements of the roads. We're looking at spring of twenty-twenty before we even see Phase Two, individuals beginning to move into that, and then you're looking deep into twenty-twenty-one by then, and I know that, I, I don't put it on the city, I know ITD has adjusted their schedules, but if we're looking at, uh, forty-one improvement and some of those other pieces taking place in twenty-twenty-one, I think some of the concerns are addressed in that. So, to me, um, yeah, is park, or, uh, is traffic a little bit of an issue? Absolutely, but I think the pieces to help alleviate that are, are in place, so I think it's a good fit. I would turn it over to someone, one of the commissioners, to make a motion at this point.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve ANNX dash zero-zero-zero-seven dash twenty-nineteen, Bell CLO three annexation, as presented this evening.
I'll second.
But a motion and a second, call for vote.
Stephenson?
Yes.
Carey?
No.
Davis?
Yes.
Latham?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Campy?
No.
Okay, that brings us to our second public hearing of the evening, that would be the Savory Comprehensive Plan Amendment, case file ANNX dash six dash two thousand nineteen and CPA dash two dash two thousand nineteen. With that being said, two motions will be required tonight, one to either approve or deny the, um, Comp Plan Amendment and for a recommendation on zoning to city council. The owner is Savory Family Trust, and the applicant is Whipple Consulting Engineers. The Planning and Zoning Commission is being asked to review the Comprehensive Plan Amendment of four acres and the annexation request of approximately eight-point-six-one acres, and to make a recommendation of the proposed high-density multifamily residential zoning to city council.
The, what you see in red is a subject site that is being, is requesting the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. It is on Third Avenue and Pinion Park Road, which are both local streets. To the south is Maplewood Avenue, and North Ross Point Road is to the east. Take into consideration that with a Comprehensive Plan Amendment, that amendment to the zoning map should be in accordance with the future land use map, and, um, and be compatible with the goals and policies in our comprehensive plan. This is the future land use map, which brings us to the request. You can see everything yellow is designated as residential, and the upper four acres is designated as commercial, with the request of being designated as residential in the future land use map. Just to put the, um, the subject site in context, to the north, we have Interstate ninety, the Centennial Trail is in blue, if you can see that, East Seltice Way, railroad tracks, the subject site. You can see that the subject site is just southeast of the Highway forty-one Commercial Corridor. Directly to the west is a medium-density subdivision comprised primarily of duplexes and triplexes. To the south here is a residential mobile home park, to the east is large lot residential, and then to the south, you have single-family residential. What looks like a vacant land is actually, um, an R-two designation as well, currently being developed. The current land use is vacant on the northern section and residential in the southern half, with no significant topology or vegetation issues. Water and sewer are both provided by Post Falls. Once again, six zone change criteria, one, is it consistent with the future land use map? Which brings us to the Comprehensive Plan, uh, request. Um, is it consistent with the goals and policies found in the comprehensive plan, such as prioritizing infill developments, prioritizing walkable, um, dense communities, having, um, multifamily on, with access to arterials and collectors? Um, the, the rest can be found in your staff report. Um, if zoning is assigned following considerations of such items as street classifications, traffic patterns, existing development, future land uses, community plans, and geographic or natural features, um, with the goal to encourage a balance of land uses to help Post Falls remain a desirable, stable, and sustainable community. You can see from the existing zoning that is there, we have R-two directly to the east, we have industrial to the north. This little patch is multi, is high-density multifamily zoned, and then everything in yellow is single-family. Once again, you can see the, uh, future land use map designating residential, and then the red is commercial. Commercial and high-density residential zoning is typically assigned along streets with higher road classifications. The higher road classifications that apply to this would be Maplewood Avenue and Ross Point Road, and the other two are local streets. Limited or neighborhood commercial and lower-density residential zoning is typically assigned for properties as they proceed further away. Once again, this could be viewed, um, as higher-density residential, um, providing a buffer for the internal community from noise, light, traffic from Seltice, the highway, and possibly even this industrial zone. Um, and industrial zoning is assigned for properties with sufficient access, which is not applicable, 'cause this is not a, uh, industrial zoning request. These are the agencies that were routed, Cootney County and Fire and Rescue, and the Police Department, both remain neutral on the proposed project. And once again, here's the general layout. Do you have any questions or comments about the Comp Plan Amendment section of this or the zoning request?
Any questions? None? Thank you.
See if I can do this right. There we go. Uh, Ray Kimball, my address is twenty-one zero-four Columbine Court here in Post Falls. I'm here tonight, um, representing the Savory family. Interestingly enough, uh, when I first took this project on, I was, did a little research on the property, and Mr. Savory, the Savory family has owned this property for the better part of fifty years, and, uh, I was looking at the final plat of Pineville, so the property's to the south, and also over to the, uh, the west, and on the final plat, actually creating those lots, Mr. Savory's name is on the property to the north, he was there before, those were even, uh, single-family houses. So, as you can see, um, I'll kinda scroll through this fairly quickly, uh, you know where the site is, um, so there's Third Avenue, um, you have the landmark there of Capone's, important to me. Um, so there's the proposed, uh, Comp Plan Change area. This is kinda one of those really weird little spots in Post Falls. This isn't one of those spots in our community that, if you're ever to bring your friend from out of state, wanna show them around our community, that you never really wander through this area and go, hey, look at this, this is our community. Um, as a matter of fact, it's, it's, it's a part of our community that's, um, has been in need, dire need of really some, whatever you wanna call it, capital infusion, some, just some rejuvenation of sorts. Um, and I, I know I mentioned it in my narrative, and I, there's a lot of words in there, and there's a big, there's a whole lot of staff report this time, so, um, I wanna point it out, is that the properties to the north that are existing in the city are part of the Urban Renewal District, uh, the East Post Falls Urban Renewal District, and the reason they're in the east, the reason the East Post Falls Urban Renewal District was created, at least one of the reasons was, is that it was designated as a deteriorating area. And, so, I'll kinda push through this a little bit, uh, you've seen the project site. The property right now, um, is zoned high-density residential, so it's not single-family residential, it's, it's county high-density residential. Um, if you were to, so this right here is, uh, Third Avenue, that's what Third Avenue looks like, um, I drove this on Monday morning, these photos are Google Earth photos. Um, so we've got these, kinda these little dumpy, I probably shouldn't say that, but, um, these, these little commercial, industrial-type shops on the north side of Third Avenue. Businesses in them include, I think there's a, a little publishing company in there, um, there's a couple automotive repair shops, um, it looks like there's one man cave there, a guy that says private shop, and it's got a Hot Rod logo on his, on his garage door, so I'm pretty sure that's a man cave. Um, and you'll also notice that, uh, Third Avenue is gravel road, uh, for a large portion of it. So, as we go, I'm probably gonna give you guys just a little perspective here on where we are, so, what I showed you right now was that those previous photos are right along here. Right now, I'm gonna show you the photos on Pinion Park Road, moving south. So, this is Pinion Park Road, it's very narrow, paved, um, I believe it's a county-maintained road, probably poorly maintained. Um, any, any sort of development on our site will widen that, bring it up to city standards, um, be a vast improvement, same with Third Avenue. So, obviously, this is not a project-specific, uh, request, but anything following, but, you know, this request to the planning department, um, would in fact include requirements for upgrades to the adjacent streets. Um, as you wander through these photos, um, you kinda see the general character, and there's a great big tractor tire back there, um, just kinda junky cars, just some, just some, not, oh, not necessarily the, the most wonderful place in our, not the shining star of our community. And then this is the site from Maplewood Street. So, for the Comprehensive Plan Change, um, you know, one of the things I wanna point out, really hit hard, is that is commercial zoning the right zoning for this property, especially on the north side? Um, so, it's considered a dilapidated area. It's, it's not, there's a lot of vacant commercial in the vicinity, to add more vacant commercial to the vicinity is not gonna do anything, um, to encourage any sort of rejuvenation or more commercial development, it's just gonna drive commercial property values further down, because you're adding that much to what's already a glut on the market of commercial in that area. And let's face it, Third Avenue, not the best place for commercial. I mean, it really, really isn't. It's a dirt road right now, it has absolutely horrible, um, exposure to anyone who's driving by. Most people don't even know Third Avenue exists right there, um, and I can, I can honestly tell you that I've driven down it four times, and it's, and all four times are in relationship to this project. Um, it's not something I've lived here my entire life, and I've driven down that road four times. Not something that, that is valuable for commercial. So, so is it better for R-three? Answer is yes. So, right now, it's currently zoned high-density residential, which is fourteen and a half units per acre based on, uh, current county zoning. Um, the recent residential development pattern in the area is multifamily, so, um, it meets with the requirements to, to, uh, be consistent with adjacent and land use development patterns in the area. And the adjacent land use to the north is, is pretty much very low-impact, like I talked about, it's, you know, it's a car, it's an auto body shop, um, man cave, publishing company, and multifamily development in the area will provide a high property-value transition from what's basically a dilapidated commercial area to transition from there to the sing- So it meets with the requirements to be consistent with adjacent and land use development patterns in the area. And the adjacent land use to the north is pretty much very low-impact. Like I talked about, it's, you know, it's a car, it's an auto body shop, man cave, publishing company. And multifamily development in the area will provide a high property value transition from what's basically a dilapidated commercial area to transition from there to the single-family to the south on Maplewood. So is the zoning compatible with the street classification? Yes. So we have not only one, but two commercial collector streets. So Maplewood Avenue is a, I believe it's considered a minor collector. And Third Avenue is considered a residential collector. Fronts on Pinion Park Road, which is also a local street. So when any development happens, those will be widened to city standards, which is one of the things we're looking for. So we want sidewalks. We want nice, good new pavement, wider streets, safer streets, better pedestrian connectivity. So is it compatible with traffic patterns? Yes, Third Avenue is anticipated to be a primary access to the site. So that's where the plan is to start. Don't know if that's going to happen that way, but that's where it will definitely, Third Avenue will definitely be in access. So it's currently very underutilized. So I was there at 7:30 in the morning in a traffic rush, people going to work on a Monday morning. And I saw one car leave on Third Avenue. And surprisingly enough, it wasn't until I got north of, or Southeast Way that it really seemed to hit any sort of traffic congestion. And it's my understanding that that's generally just because of the configuration of that intersection. And ITD is working on solutions for that currently. So is the zoning compatible with the existing development and future land uses? Yes. So there is high-density, so high-density is appropriate, especially around areas where there's commercial access to, so we have access to walking distance to services, gas station, haircut, Capones, different things like that. And it's one of those things where having some higher-density residential people or development in the area, it, those kinds of things go hand-in-hand with service, development of existing commercial into service. And so that's one of those things that is, we're hoping happens. Is it compatible with geographic natural features? It's flat. Site's very, very flat, not a whole lot of contour to it. And easy to develop into multifamily. And so as you know, higher-density residential zoning, R3 is encouraged to be along the collector streets, not back away in the middle of residential neighborhoods, away from those collector streets, who want people to be able to get to and from easily. And also to be within a quarter mile. This is one of those things where it's actually within a quarter mile of an existing transit stop. So very easy walking distance for those people who are, may have limited vehicular mobility. So very nice. So is it in accordance with the future land use map? Not yet, not all of it. That's why we're here for the comprehensive plan amendment. And it's probably important to note that even if the property were zoned commercial on the north side, and maybe even R3 on the south side, it would still meet the requirements for a special use permit for multifamily in a commercial zone. It would meet every single one of those requirements for a special use permit. And so zoning should be in accordance with comprehensive plan, goals, and policies. We kind of beat that to death. It's been beat to death a little bit in the staff report. We hit it pretty hard in our narrative. Probably one of the most important things I really want to point out is that two, one, it's an infill annexation. So it's part of a little island of county. I don't ever expect Pineville to come in unless the city forces it to happen because it's already fully developed. So it's just kind of a shrinking of that island. And it's also important to note that this property is located in a deteriorating part of our community. And an R3 zoning designation will provide an avenue for revitalization without using urban renewal funds. It'll be outside the urban renewal district. It won't be inside. There won't be any urban renewal funds that go towards that, but it will go towards revitalization of an area that is essentially considered deteriorated in the city Post Falls or in our community. And so with that, I'll be happy to address any concerns or answer any questions that the commission may have.
Research questions?
Just again, the properties to the east and west are county, right, still, right?
Yes, that's correct.
And what's the county zoning on those?
High-density.
High-density?
I'm going to go back. There, oh, almost. There we go. So the subject property is this wonky little triangle-y thing here and this rectangle. So to the west is high-density residential. And to the east is ag suburban.
Ray, on the, you said on the county right now, it's, you can basically have 14.3 units per acre. What would the change allow for?
The maximum density in, for typical apartment projects in City Post Falls, I think, is 18 units per acre. There's something I don't think anyone's ever really done, which is townhouses. And I think that maybe goes to 21. But I don't, I don't think that's, this is not the place for that. So.
It's not extremely.
It's not a huge jump. And it's been high-density residential for a very long time. And nothing's happened.
Well, one thing to note, Ray, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we're looking at 8.6 acres and that it's 18, correct? Is what you said? But that's obviously not including any improvements, roads, things of that nature. So that's going to drive that number down, correct?
Oh, yeah. And, you know, the idea behind this isn't to just slam a huge number of apartments in there. It's to try to revitalize an area of Post Falls that has, that has just been, you know, it's been deteriorating for a long time. And it's not going to change if it stays in the county. It just, it just won't. It can't. Can't change from, it's just going to get, well, it's not going to get any better.
Any other questions for Ray? None? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, you want to bring that up as well then? Excellent, thank you. All right. None in favor? To an opposition, one neutral. First individual says maybe, wishing to speak, Mary Strain. Do you wish to speak? Okay, you're good? Okay. Says wishing to speak, neutral, need privacy from multi-story units that would overlook yards. Hold that one. Then we have two other individuals both wishing to speak in opposition. First one is Lori Potts. Lori, if you would come up, state your name, address.
My name is Lori Potts. I live at 4455 East Maplewood. I live right on the edge of the dump right there, next to the proposed complex. My concerns of this is it's not consistent with the surrounding land use. The property to the west of it is currently a trailer park. I was, the maps that were sent out, I don't see that it's zoned R3. It's definitely not high-density with a trailer park. And then everything to the east of it is single-family properties. We're all on one-acre lots. Everything to the south of it is single-family property. And as you get closer to the river, they just keep going up higher and higher in value. So I definitely would not say that it's a deteriorating section of Post Falls. To the north, there are some businesses. There's a Coinania House. There's a couple auto shops. Nothing that would require, you know, high traffic. You're there for a purpose. You're not necessarily looking for a lot of traffic in that area. The roads surrounding it, definitely, there aren't any major roadways. Maplewood Avenue, we already have congestion problems when the freeway has construction, which is daily. It seems like this time of year. Everyone takes Celtae Way. And then when Celtae Way is backed up, we get the congestion onto Maplewood Boulevard, and it's bumper-to-bumper. And I have small children. I mean, the fact that they can't even go out and play right now because of the backup. Pinion Park, you can barely get two vehicles by. And my concern is that in order to get a wider road, you're going to have to take an easement, which would take my property and the neighbors to the north of it. And then Third Avenue, yes, it is gravel. It is one lane at best right now. And it just cannot support the type of congestion that we're going to get in that area. Those are my concerns, as well as what type of property and apartments are we planning on building? I mean, is this low-income? Is this duplexes? Is this three-story? My concern is as you get more people in there, you get more kids, you get more drivers. With that, a lot of the times, you get more property crimes when you have more kids in there as kids are running around and learning how to drive. And a lot of times, not exactly being the best drivers. We're already having some issues with that. And with 116 units, that equals out to be 4.5 per acre. Approximately 116 units, you average two vehicles per household. You're looking at 334 vehicles. There's no way those roadways can maintain that. We already have an R2 development going in at the end of the road at Ross Point and Maplewood. We don't know the ramifications of that yet. We don't know how that's going to affect traffic, what that's going to do to the neighborhoods, what that's going to do to our schooling and the kids in the schooling, if there's going to be enough to handle those kids. And I don't know about the property there. I know that we're on septic tank. I don't know how that's going to affect the sewer system. If they're going to have to run sewer through all of that. I know all my neighbors are also on septic systems. So that's also something to take into consideration, how that's going to affect that. That would be all that I have.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, also in opposition, wishing to speak, Glenn Courtney? Glenn, have you state your name and address?
Glenn Courtney, 4576 East Third. I live to the east of Pinion Park. It's a dead-end street. There's four of us that live there. It is paved. They put gravel, the county paved it two or three years ago. Then they put gravel over it here a couple of years ago to make it last longer. I'm concerned about the type of housing going in, what they're going to have to do to the roads. I don't want to see high-density apartments. I would prefer more like Pineville, single-family homes. Also, it is, the drainage, it's uphill for me. So I'm wondering what's going to happen with all the water, the runoff, if they do. Big parking lots and apartment buildings, where is that going to go? Because I've been flooded before with a rainstorm. What else did I put down there?
Road widening, housing, drainage, traffic.
Yeah, traffic, you know, like I said, Third Avenue is a dead-end street. You go past Pinion Park, it ends, and I don't see it ever going through. There's a business right there. You know, I would like to see that developed, but not, not high-density. So that's all I got.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you very much, sir. So applicant want to come up and address a few of those? And then with some of the roads that we need to bring up, Mr. Melvin?
Sure, I'll hit a couple of those, and I'll leave Mr. Melvin to address any traffic issues. So widening, street widening. So city standards and require that any street widening that we do happens on our side. So we have to widen on our side. If the road, by just doing the widening on our side, is not wide enough to be safe, then the city requires us to widen on the other side, out to the limits of the existing right-of-way, whatever it takes to make it safe. So in this case, Pinion Park Road would be widened on our side. It's already really, really skinny two lanes, maybe one and a half. You'd probably squeak by two people driving real slow. So we'd widen it out on our side to the residential half-street. And that would widen it to the point where it's so much, much safer. Same with Third Avenue. So Mr. Courtney mentioned that Third Avenue is a dead-end. And so it's a dead-end on the east where he lives. So I would not expect any traffic from any sort of development here to go east down that street that'll go west. And that's the direction of where all the widening would happen. It'd be on our property, our side. All city ordinances require that we keep all of our drainage on-site. Soils out there are fantastic. They're gravel sands. We do the typical, you know, if there's any sort of, you know, whatever parking lot, we drain to a dry well, swales and dry wells, and take care of it. Sewer, septic. So yes, sewer will be brought, city sewer will be brought into the site. There are some existing homes out there that are on septic. Those will be removed from septic. And anything that stays, which I don't know if there will be anything, will have to be put on city sewer. So that's a good thing. So we're a sole-source aquifer here. Having septic tanks sitting in drain fields over top of our aquifer in a density like we have in that vicinity is not a good thing. So, you know, being able to bring sewer in is, will take care of some of that. I don't even think I want to address any sort of intonations that there's criminal activity associated with apartments. I used to live in apartments. Most people did. So I don't consider myself a criminal, and I don't think it's fair to associate that. We all hit traffic, everyone hits traffic, 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 traffic. And I will let Bill take care of a lot of that. But I do want to point out that in the staff report, we have a traffic transportation master plan. And our city staff takes and puts a heck of a lot of time into that. And our city staff looks at those, all the traffic numbers. And, you know, that traffic master plan isn't just a traffic master plan. It's a citywide traffic study. And it's got thousands of pages of appendices of analysis of all of our intersections with forecasts out into the future. And how do we, you know, how do we handle traffic in the future based on what we think, you know, densities and, you know, planning for the future and things like that? They put a lot of work into that. So when I see the staff report say that the, that any development that's going to happen based on the proposed density will be covered in the transportation master plan, I put a lot of weight on that. I put a lot of weight, says that they're an expert. They've looked at this. And I think it's really important that we put a lot of weight on the people who are experts at it. And I understand, like I said, I've lived here all my life. I've seen the traffic change a lot. And I understand that there's growing pains, and there's, you know, things lag behind. And that's just kind of the way it works. But there's no changing the fact that this is a great place to live, and people want to live here. And we're not going to change the fact that people are coming in to Post Falls. Traffic will get worse. The best thing we can do is do what the city has done. They've planned for it, and they've done a really good job, and are continuing to do a really good job. And I think that's it.
Any other questions for applicant?
Question on the high-density residential to the west. That's county-high-density residential, so.
That's correct.
It could be, though it is used for a mobile home park now, it could be turned into high-density whatever.
So it meets the requirement, or it meets, there's a lot of mobile homes in there. I didn't count them. There's a lot. And I don't know what the existing density is. And I don't, to be quite honest, I don't know what it could be. So I don't, I haven't really, I'm not an expert right now in the county zoning.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
No.
Nope, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any questions with this piece regarding roads? Do we need to bring up?
Yeah, I'd like to find out what Third Street, maybe plans for that or city plans.
Commission members, Bill Melvin, city engineer. So the development would be required. We would have to dedicate 70-foot of right-of-way along Third and also along Pinion Park, and develop those fully out. It would provide access to Third. It also would provide an additional access to Maplewood Avenue. And so people would have, you know, the ability to go to Maplewood, or they would have the access to, access directly to Ross Point from Third. So there's, circulation seems to be adequate. We haven't done a detailed traffic study. As was mentioned, we generally manage our transportation system through our transportation master plan. This is in conformance with our transportation master plan. Also of note is that immediately following the widening of Highway 41, as the Idaho Transportation Department has planned, they've got another project that's probably another $40 million that they're going to invest to completely redo the interchange of that Ross Point 41 within there. And with what we've seen with their preliminary plans, this should fit just finally with. what we've seen with their preliminary plans, this should fit just finally with what they've got planned in their preliminary stage. So they have a preferred alternative of how that interchange is going to look, and this seems to fit completely within their plan. So we don't have any real concerns with what's going on. I will want, since this is annexation and not development, one of the issues we will address with the developer at the time that they actually get ready to do something, is that portion between Ross Point and this development that's currently gravel. It wouldn't be their responsibility necessarily to complete full urban improvements through there, but we would work with them to try to get that section paved. So we don't have a section there where we're now increasing traffic and dragging gravel out onto Ross Point Road.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Anything else?
I got one.
Hang on just a second.
Sorry, sir. You've had your chance. We can maybe catch one of us after we're done with this and maybe answer your questions in the.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Staff, before we close things out?
Is it actually two separate recommendations?
They ran concurrent, correct?
Yeah.
It is. It's two determinations tonight. Before you can make a determination on whether or not the zone is consistent with the comprehensive plan, need to make a decision on whether, what that comprehensive plan should be, whether you want to make the change from commercial to residential for that northerly piece.
So, okay. So you'd have to do the comp plan.
Yeah, I would make two motions for this.
First, and then a, okay.
Annexation, first amendments, or.
Amendment first. Annexation, okay.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? None? Okay, we'll close the hearing. Anybody comments? Mr. Latham?
Get to go first.
Well, we made eye contact.
Yeah, you know what is, it's interesting. I used to live around there in my twenties. So I did bike through that little road, and it is, it is interesting how there's commercial that are, that's backed up to the railroad tracks, and it's because of the railroad tracks that's there, and the access to it isn't ideal. So in the big picture of things, if you were, you know, designing a town, you wouldn't put commercial there. You'd put commercial along Seltice Way, but it made sense that it was kind of backed up along the road tracks at one point. So it doesn't really, I guess I'm always wary about residential backing up to commercial and changing from commercial to residential. But in this case, I was, I was looking at the map on my phone, and I was remembering the assisted living down there on Maplewood from three, four years ago.
Yeah.
The lodge. And at first, I was very skeptical about that, but now you've seen that grown up, and the houses behind that to the east, and it does work really pretty well. I think that's a pretty good case study. It's assisted living and not apartments, but it's kind of somewhat similar. So it does, it does actually make sense to me in that location.
Anyone else? Sam?
Yeah, I normally always would like to see commercial kind of buffer in between there, and then have the, you know, maybe some multifamily buffer between the commercial and the single-family. But again, that's a unique road, not a lot of traffic. I don't think that in this given case, commercial there makes sense. So I agree with that. Having that buffer zone of maybe a little higher density residential would be better than having commercial on a road that isn't highly trafficked, and so.
Nancy?
Well, I think the commercial's had a good chance. It's had, it's had a long time to develop itself there if it was going to. So as an alternative, I think this is a pretty good plan.
I agree with the amendment he has for the future land use.
Same thing.
Yeah.
I think everybody's in agreeance, including the individuals that live around there, is that we want to see some type of improvement. And I think that, again, we don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves, and we're dealing with an annexation or an amendment and an annexation. We're a long ways away from seeing any kind of construction. It's nice to see that, again, ITD is looking at that Ross Point exchange, some improvements there. So I think, again, it's one of those growing pains of, we've got an opportunity here to make the improvements, and that those, those road improvements will coincide and hopefully go right along with them. So I would entertain a motion at this time.
Can I ask a question before we make a movement, a motion?
If we do, do we need to reopen the hearing?
Ten a question.
Well, I would.
Is it procedural?
Yeah, Items One and Two can, to be considered an inclusion in an annexation agreement. Would those be part of the amendment?
No, no. That's, that's just for, essentially to put people on notice, what we'll want to see when we get to the point of negotiating an annexation agreement.
Okay.
So those get carried forward in the staff report to the city council, and then from there we negotiate an annexation agreement.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Anyone?
I move to amend the future land use map from a commercial designation to a residential designation.
I second.
Okay. Fed a motion and second. Call for vote.
Campy?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Latham?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Stephenson?
Yes.
All right.
Just do the annex?
Yep, we need to do the annexation as well.
All right. I move to approve Savory Annex, file name ANN0, ANNX00062019, finding it's consistent with the comp plan amendment and current comp plan, and adopt the facts and findings in the staff report with a requested zoning of R3.
A second.
Motion is a second. Call for vote.
Stephenson?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Latham?
Yes.
Campy?
Yes.
So moved. Mr. Melvin, if you could connect with Mr. Courtney afterwards. I know you still had another question, but we'll have staff connect with you so we can get that taken care of. That being said, we will open up the third public hearing of the evening, Ruby Springs Annexation and Subdivision.
Good evening, commissioners. My name's Ethan Porter. I'm Planner One for the City Post Falls. I'm here to present the Ruby Springs Annexation and Subdivision, case file ANNX8-2019 and SUBD-13-2019. Again, this will require, like the previous one, two motions as well, one for the annexation and one for the subdivision. So we're right now looking at the owners being Wild Horse Investments LLC, and the applicant for this is Whipple Consulting Engineers. The Planning and Zoning Commission is being asked to review the annexation request of approximately 5.73 acres, and to make a recommendation of the proposed single-family residential R1 zoning designation, as well as review of the subdivision to city council. So looking here at the screen, you seek in the red hatch the project location for Ruby Springs, Long Prairie Avenue, which is the principal arterial. To the west, you have North Chase Road, which is a minor arterial, and then Spokane Street to the east, which is a major collector. And so here, you can also see north, you have Crown Point, which is a mix of SC4 and SC3 smart code zoning. To the east, you have residential subdivision R1. And then to the south, you have the Pheasant's Landing, which is currently being developed now. It's a subdivision, R1 subdivision. And then to the west, you have county land of just large lot residential. So looking at the current land use, like I said, it's a large lot residential within Cootney County. The physical characteristics, there is not many, no significant topography or vegetation issues that are known or on-site. Water provider is going to be East Green Acres Irrigation District. I refer to Exhibit A8 for the will serve letter. And then the sewer provider is going to be the City Post Falls. Looking at the surrounding zoning, you have, like I said, smart code zoning to the north, R1 residential subdivisions to the east and the south, and then county lands to the west. And then down here, you can see the R1S zoning for residential. Looking at zone change criteria, you have consistency with the future land use map, which I'll show you in the following slide, to show you that land use designation. And then looking at zone change criteria, two, consistency with the goals and policies found in the conference plan. This will help with development of this project, increased pedestrian network with sidewalks and fringe improvements, as well as being partially infill. I mean, considering this is not necessarily an infill pocket of county, but I mean, it's abutted on three sides of the city, and then obviously to the west, it's county. So that is a priority within the goals and policies in the conference plan. Also, you'd be bringing in sanitary sewer, so as any septic systems on-site would then be on sanitary sewer for the city. And as mentioned later, earlier tonight, you know, we have a sole-source aquifer, and protecting that would be beneficial as well. It's compatible residential use with the surrounding to the north, to the east, and to the south. So it's definitely compatible use within the surrounding zoning and uses. Looking at zone change criteria, three, being street classifications, traffic patterns, existing development, future land uses, community plans and geographic or natural features. Basically, there is going to be no negative impacts from transportation. I know that there, as you'll see later in my presentation, the proposed subdivision, there is currently a home on the northern part that is accessing off Prairie, but as they get annexed in and the subdivision goes through, that will be restricted per the city master plans. And as I mentioned before as well, you know, Prairie Avenue is the principal arterial, which would restrict access to any subdivision being, having access to it. There is two internal streets that are proposed, but I'll get into that a little bit later. So looking at the future land use designation, it's residential as it's designated, and as this annexation and R1 proposal is residential. So it does meet that future land use designation. Commercial and high-density residential, which this is not a proposal for, does not apply. Limited or neighborhood commercial does not apply, but the lower-density residential, which this would be, applies for zone change criteria five. So typically, you know, they're assigned for properties as they proceed farther away from the higher-intensity urban activity. This is not along a commercial corridor, nor is it within the city center. So it's kind of in the outlying, following suit with all the residential subdivisions in the area. As well, this is not industrial zoning for zone change criteria six, so it's Moving into the subdivision, again, like I stated, the access is going to be restricted for this home, which is currently accessing off Prairie Avenue to the north. That'll be restricted, and there is a note on this plan as well for that. We have over here a temporary 20-foot access easement for fire access and water. Currently, in subdivision review criteria three within the staff report, it'll be noted in there. It's not a condition, but it is noted that it's yet to be determined where exactly this 20-foot easement's going to go, as this is a proposal of where it could be. We don't want this being affected for snow storage and removal operations as far as them piling up and blocking access. So in the design phase of this, it will be configured and figured out to be not a hindrance to that operation. As well, it does fit our lots, square footage of 6,500 square feet as a minimum for R1 residential, and the lot widths meet the 60-foot minimum. The density is within the density of five units per acre. And there are 16 lots. I didn't have it in the slide, but I did want to note that there are 16 proposed lots within this subdivision. And so moving forward into looking at the subdivision review criteria, water's being provided by East Green Acres, like I mentioned, Exhibit A8 shows a will serve letter. City Post Falls is providing the sewer, as mentioned before, which they have capacity to adequately accommodate the subdivision. The proposed streets are consistent with the transportation element of the conference plan. And like I mentioned earlier, the two streets that are being proposed are Kiwanda Avenue and Kilchis Avenue. If I'm pronouncing those correctly or wrong, I'm sorry. But those two internal streets will be used to move along to the outer minor arterial of Chase Road and the major collector of Spokane Street. So it would be consistent with the conference of plan element of transportation. Looking at the topographical conditions, they are no presenting hazards, like I mentioned before. The area of the proposed subdivision is zoned, is designated to be zoned as a residential, and will conform to your R1 standards within the conference of plan and our city code. Also, the community will not bear more than its fair share of costs through development. They will have impact fees through the building application and development portion of this subdivision that will pay for the streets and parks and safety for the city. Here, we routed through the agencies, and then the responses that we received for the police department were remaining neutral on the proposal. So I will be here to answer any questions or comments you may have.
Questions for Ethan?
Question?
Nope. Thank you, sir. Applicant.
Ray Kimball, 2104, Columbine Court, Post Falls, for the record. So I'll kind of scroll through this stuff pretty quickly. So I'm here on behalf of Wild Horse Investments for the Ruby Springs Annexation and Subdivision. There's the property. You've seen this. So that's project site. So this is the future land use map. So it shows what should it, what it should be. There's yellow all around, and R1 fits that. So there's the existing zoning map. So you've seen that. So here's, so, so does annexation criteria, does it meet with street classifications, existing future land development, et cetera, et cetera? Yeah. So the zoning is the same as the adjacent properties to the south and east, and it fits the future land use map. It's less dense than the density to the north across the street, which is, I think, SC3 and SC4, which is a higher-density zoning. And R1 zoning is supported by the comprehensive plans described in the narrative and in the staff report ad nauseam. Lower-density residential zoning is typically assigned for properties as we are reaching further away from higher-density urban activity. And we're at the, pretty much right around the northern edge of City Post Falls right now, and about two miles from the Seltice Way corridor. So we definitely fit that criteria. We are in conformance with the future land use map. Zoning should be in accordance with comprehensive plans, goals, and policy. And we definitely hit that very hard in the staff report, as well as in our narrative. So there's many places where we meet those goals and policies as described. Subdivision plan, so fairly straightforward. So one of the things I just want to kind of talk about just a little bit, so the, they're a little hard to read here. They're even worse hard to read than the other one. I made it bigger, but my screen has a lot higher resolution on my computer than this does. So I'm sorry about that. So what we have is, is we've got around 80, 85 to 90-foot wide lots right here in these little blocks. So these nine lots. The idea behind this was to create, to target a market. I mean, we can always target a market. Doesn't mean we hit the market. But the goal is to target the move-up market where it's a three-car garage. So that's why we went extra wide on the lot. So they're extra wide, allow for the three-car garage. These are very, actually pretty short lots, so they're not very deep. They're not going to have a whole lot of backyard. That's on purpose. Idea for those is to have a nice three-car garage for a retiree that wants to move in, have a nice, big, big, you know, decent-sized house with a big garage and not a whole heck of a lot of yard maintenance. Conversely, these lots over here are just as wide, but they're about 150 feet deep. So these are the shop lots. So these are the person, for the person or family who wants to build a house, nice house, three-car garage, and put a shop in the back. So very similar So, very similar to Viking Estates, which is one that's got a lot of shops in the back, you saw that a couple of years ago. So, as a consequence of that, the average lot size is 9,250-some square feet, which is about one-and-a-half times the minimum of City Post Falls requirements. So, quite a bit larger than the average. Minimum lot size is right around 8,712 in this subdivision, so 6,500 is the minimum City Post Falls, we're quite a bit above that, so quite a bit larger lots. The goal here wasn't to maximize density, it was to try to hit a target market. So, have provisions been made to supply water? We have a bill serve letter from Irrigation District. They serve within their boundaries, and they don't serve outside their boundaries, but if you're inside, they do serve. Provisions have been made for sewer, we're in the City Post Falls master service area for sewer, and they have capacity. I'm going to let this slide sink in, I've been waiting two years to use this slide. So, we did, we are providing connectivity to the adjacent properties, so this is one of those things that's a little bit tough, and some of these little pockets is to provide, you know, access to the adjacent properties without cutting them off or doing anything like that. So, are there any soil or topographical conditions? We don't know of any hazards or topographical things that would keep us from designing, or the subdivision from happening. And does it meet the requirements of the zoning code? And yes, it does, we've met the, both the density, as well as the frontage requirements and the, of the R1 zoning, assuming we get annexed as such. With that, do you have any questions or concerns?
No. Any questions?
What is the, what will happen with the Prairie Ave right away?
So...
Just be worried about widening of the street?
Sure, I can talk about that a little bit. So, what has happened, so I've had the opportunity, so we did, I designed Grayling Estates, and so for all the properties essentially between, I want to say, well, basically Chase Avenue and Idaho Street, the city has required that the land dedication happen to city standard, so we have to give the city the appropriate right-of-way. And then, we do a design for the road, or at least a partial design, and come up with a cost estimate that the city engineering staff agrees with, that says it's going to cost this much to build it, then the developer writes them a check and hands it to the city and says, "You hold this, and when you get all of the, all of those properties all the way along there, you get all those checks, and they're in that account, in that interest-bearing account, then go build it all at once." That way, we don't have this crazy hodgepodge of, you know, 300 feet of asphalt that's really, really wide, and it's back to two lanes, and then, you know, go another 150 feet, and it's really wide again, and we see that all over along those things, and so that's the city's method of keeping that from happening, instead they just collect the money, and hopefully, at the end of the day, that interest-bearing account is kept up with inflation, and they can go build it.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions?
So, how are they going to, so they'll come out on Ash, is that...
So, that's a good question. There we go. It's a really poor, so they're going to come south on Mashie, and they can come out on Ashworth, which connects out to Chase...
Oh, gotcha.
Or all the way out here on Ashworth, which connects out to Spokane Street.
Okay.
So...
So, they're either east or west?
Yep, they can go east or west.
Okay.
City wouldn't let us connect out to Prairie.
Right, okay, yeah.
And last question, Ray, the, that little section, that buffer zone, what does that look like? Is it...
Which one?
On the west side there, the...
This little thing there?
That little wedge there, is that...
What is that?
Grassy knoll, is that...
So, that is a paved fire apparatus. So, Fire Code says that we're, we can only go 150 feet from the end of a turnaround before we have to have some sort of a fire truck apparatus turnaround, or some way for an emergency vehicle to turn around without having to use reverse. So, I know the trucks come with it, but they don't like to do it for very long. So, that was, that was our solution, was to come to the end of the road here, and what that does is that it, it affects two lots, and it goes away when the road extends, and then these, you know, it, it becomes unusable, and then, then these guys end up with a little paved access to the back of their lot for parking the boat, or whatever. So, that kind of thing, that was kind of, that was kind of the idea behind it, is to just give them a 20-foot, little 20-foot wide access where, you know, when the roads do extend, and be it in, well, I don't, never, you know, if you believe the one sign in the back, or the, you know, eventually in the future, whoever, you know, whatever that happens, then those people have that opportunity, it'll be temporary, the easement will extinguish, and then they'll have full use of their whole lot.
Okay. In the other questions? No? Thank you, sir.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have two, we have Wade Jaclyn in favor, does not wish to speak. And is it Michael Sigman, it says, oh, in favor, in favor also, not wishing to speak. So, we have two that were in favor, do not wish to speak, so therefore, there would be no need for rebuttal. So, at this point, do we have any question for staff applicant, anybody else, before I close this piece out? Yes, sir?
I'd like to clarify...
Please. We want to have you in every one of these bills, so please.
Thank you. I'm Bill Melvin, city engineer. I wanted to clarify a little bit about that temporary turnaround access that we have on the west end for fire. When our city crews come in here, if we have a heavy snow year, they're going to shove snow to the end of those roadways, and so we, we're just going to make sure that we work with the applicant to have an adequate location, and how, and how that actually functioned and is laid out that accommodates our street crews, so that they'll be happy with it, and also accommodates the fire department as well. So, just recognize that that, we're showing it at the very western end there, there might be a different configuration of that, but we, we will have something that satisfies with them, so I just wanted to be clear that, that, you know, this might not be the, our final layout of that, but we'll have something that accommodates fire and, and the city crews for real fine, so that was all.
Thank you for reminding us. I know Ethan brought that up, but that is a good point. Okay? Anything else? Nothing? So, we'll go ahead and close that. Anyone have any comment?
No. I think it's there.
Okay, if there's no comment, then at this point, we look for a motion. From anyone up here.
Okay. Let's see. So, we have the annexation first, right? We do the annexation? Oh, we annexation, oh, I'm sorry, we did that. Okay. I move to approve Ruby Springs subdivision, subdivision dash 0013 dash 2019, finding it is consistent with a comprehensive plan and adopting the findings and conclusions and conditions one through 12, as noted in the staff report.
A second.
Motion, a second. Call for a vote.
Stephenson?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Hampi?
Yes.
Okay. We're on the annexation. I was going to say, we need the annexation as well.
We did, we did the subdivision, we just did the annexation, right?
Right.
Okay, so now we do the subdivision?
I believe that was subdivision. That was subdivision, that was subdivision. So, we, now we need the annexation, yes.
I'll move to approve the Ruby Springs annexation request with an R1 zoning designation.
Second.
Okay, motion, a second, we'll go ahead and call for a vote for this.
Hampi?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Latham?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Stephenson?
Yes.
Two in a row with two motions makes it a little bit confusing. I think we got there.
No, sorry, that was a little backwards.
I believe that we have the final public hearing, Title 18A and 18 text amendment. Don't everybody leave for this.
That's a lot of reading.
Yeah. I have it right here, if anybody wants a full paper.
Ladies and gentlemen, Bob Seal, Community Development Director, here to present on the behalf of the Planning Department. So, we have two different text amendments primarily, one focused in 18A, one focused in 18. The first one that we'll be looking at directly deals with the building configuration in the Smart Code II through the Smart Code VI zoning. This mostly deals with how the buildings are oriented towards the street and sidewalk connectivity. As you can see, the text, this is an additional text, text that will be added to the zoning regulations, that all principal buildings must have the primary entrance facing the public sidewalk, and readily identifiable by the use of such things as the canopies, forecourts, porticoes, and, and the like. Interior buildings, these are ones that you wouldn't typically see facing the street, may utilize a well-lit and clearly-marked pedestrian-oriented plazas or courtyard entrances to serve as principal entrances. Again, just trying to figure out a way to clearly identify the entrance to some of these mixed-use or residential structures within the Smart Code zones. And all entrances must be connected to the sidewalk within the public frontage and/or private frontage by providing concrete, asphalt, or pavers for the connection. And another portion of this, in the SC four, five, and six, we're dealing with parking and density calculations. Here, we are primarily dealing with the addition of a fee in lieu of, and to limit the amount of on-street parking that accounted towards requirements, specifically in the commercial and mixed-use buildings. So, in this one, talking about building density for non-residential or vertical mixed-use buildings is determined by the sum of the actual parking that's calculated onsite, so within the lot, along the parking lane corresponding to the frontage, or by paying fees in lieu of for the parking, providing parking spaces as allowed by another section that we are also adding to the regulations. And it also notes that no more than 50% of the required parking can be provided in the parking lanes corresponding to the lot frontage. In, similar to the last one I just read through, the building density for a lot under residential use is determined by the actual parking calculated, again, within the lot, along the parking lanes, and paying fee in lieu of. For the residential use, is no more than 25%, ones that are strictly residential use, no more than 25% of the required parking can be provided in the parking lanes corresponding to the lot frontage. From the illustration here, what we wanted to basically try and show is that these are the park, this, this is the area that is considered the parking lanes. You have the angled parking, or you have parallel parking. The way that the regulations are written currently is that 100% of the parking, the on-street parking counts towards your requirements for the construction of the residential or mixed-use buildings, or commercial buildings. By adding a limitation on that, it requires that more parking be provided onsite, so that this leaves additional parking for downtown-area visitors, whether they are going to this particular business or residential use. This provides for additional on-street parking for people not directly, you know, associated with that business or residential use that they are parking in front of, so. In terms of the fee in lieu of, this is something that has not been put into the regulations yet, that's why we're adding it now. So, instead of furnishing off-street parking spaces, parking on, onsite, we are looking to offer an in lieu of payments that can be set forth in this section for the later development of parking by the city, such as a parking lot or a parking garage. This regulation that we're adding now would require that the city council adopt a fee in lieu of fee structure. The fee would reflect the cost of acquiring property and constructing public parking spaces within the downtown. The fee will be calculated as follows: average tax assessed property value in the downtown per square foot multiplied by 270 square feet, that's the size of the parking stall and the portion of the access drive, plus the average cost of constructing a parking space. The adopted fee will be reviewed annually, to make sure that it remains accurate. What we are looking at here is, again, furthering the fee in lieu of requirements, and indicates the number of parking spaces for which you could actually pay to get out of constructing. So, if eight or fewer parking spaces are required on a parcel, or for a use, 50% rounded up to the next space of the spaces may be replaced with the fees in lieu of. If nine to 20 parking spaces are required, then only 40% of the spaces may be replaced with the fees in lieu. However, if more than 21 parking spaces are required, 30% of the spaces may be replaced with fees in lieu of, but not to exceed a total of 15 parking spaces. So, the remainder of the parking spaces that are required, required for the, the use are going to be constructed onsite or on the street. So, in this portion of it, in 28.010, is establishing, noting that the city council will establish a fund for the revenues to be maintained until such time as we will be able to construct additional parking, or making other parking improvements in the downtown. It'll also note that on the certificate of occupancy of any of these buildings, the number of parking stalls that had been offset by the payment is going to be noted on that. So, we'll also see a change in the zoning table for this section, for the SC four and SC five and SC six. As you can see, one of the things that we also touched on is a, under the SC four, it noted about limited retail. We are removing the requirements for, to have retail or, or commercial uses at a corner, so at corner locations, not more than one per block, and we're removing that requirement, and we are also removing the specific use shall be further limited to neighborhood store or food service seating, no more than 40. So, we're just trying to establish that while we're looking for retail use on that ground floor, it does not necessarily have to be at a corner in an SC four zone, and it is not strictly limited to neighborhood store or food service seating, so. And we also note that in the SC five and SC six, for the parking requirements, that the number of dwelling units on each lot is limited by the requirement of going from one parking space per unit to 1.5 parking spaces per unit. Again, within this table, noting the change from one dwelling, or one parking space per unit to 1.5. So, that covers that portion of the FC four, five, six zones. This deals with dry voice, so this is another kind of thing. Do you have any questions on the previous part, before I move to another, this is a little more related to something else?
I do have a question, I don't know if this is something that should be answered here, but the in lieu of...
Yes.
What determination, what determines that, or, you know, what's the, is there a certain criteria in, or to do that, or...
Well, kind of what was indicated on a previous slide, let me see which one we're So, instead of furnishing off-street parking spaces required for uses within the downtown, in lieu payments may be set forth in this section. So, what we are saying is you, sometimes a site is tighter than you expect it to be... So what we are saying is you, sometimes a site is tighter than you expect it to be, or a configuration of a building makes more sense in a, you know, to do it differently than would be, it would best suit the site, or vice versa. And so they may not be able to fit all the parking that they need onsite. So this provides an opportunity to, you know, have, have the street frontages completed, we will always require the street frontages to be completed, and create as much parking as they can onsite, but if they are unable to complete it to the full extent on, holding all the parking onsite, they get to pay into a pot of money, a fund, essentially, that that fund is then set aside and is strictly intended to be used to construct additional parking in this downtown area.
And does the building department make that decision?
No, that's, that'll be something that happens at the site plan phase.
Okay.
Commissioner Carey, I'd note really quickly for you that this concept was already in the code, it wasn't really well-spelled out, it talked about you could purchase or lease spaces from a civic parking reserve, that was never really implemented, but that was kind of this idea that if you needed to provide additional parking beyond what you could accommodate onsite, that you could essentially buy it from a reserve. This allows the city to accumulate the funds to essentially acquire and build new parking areas for the downtown to serve as the, the area.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, this changes, cleaner language, yeah.
It's a little more specific.
Yeah.
We made it clear what you can do.
Sorry. Question on the previous, was there already a set requirement for onsite parking for non-residential? Is there, was there... Yeah, I mean, there is, non-residential has its own parking requirements. The only thing that we changed with the non-residential is how much counts for on-street parking, or how much on-street parking counts towards their requirements.
Okay.
So we changed that from 100% down to 50%. So if you've got, you know, you can only, they can only count up to 50% of their parking on, off-street.
And residential's now 25.
And residential is now 25. And the, what we changed with the residential was also the number of parking spaces required per unit, from one to 1.5. We good? For now?
Yeah.
All right, so the other section that we are looking at is in Title 18. This deals with front yard setbacks for garages, is a minimum of 20 feet measured from the front of the garage to the property line, or the edge of the sidewalk nearest the structure if the sidewalk has been constructed outside of the right-of-way in an easement, whichever is closer to the garage. So what it is that we're kind of looking at is, this is probably not the easiest to see, it's kind of faded lines, but you can see the edge of the garage here at this end, and the red line is the property line, the blue line is the edge of the sidewalk. So the purposes behind this 20-foot space from the garage to the sidewalk can more or less be illustrated by this photograph, in that we want at least 20 feet from the edge of the garage to the edge of the sidewalk. And right now, our regulation states that minimum 20-foot setbacks to the residential garages are required, measured to the property lines or back of sidewalk when an easement, whichever is closer. So what is currently stating is that it's 20 feet to whatever is closest, the sidewalk or the property line. And what, and while it's not changing a ton, this allows for certain situations that may, may never need to have the additional area with, on, on a property to expand and add a sidewalk, or expand the sidewalk. This is kind of allows for the administrative exception to provide that space, which kind of is covered in there here. So maximum 20% reduction requires setback from external property lines, provided that the front yard setback for a residential structure can't be reduced below 10 feet to the front of the residence, or 20 feet to the front of the garage, measured from the edge of the sidewalk nearest the structure. If no sidewalk is present, front yard setbacks may not be reduced through an administrative exception. So what we're saying is, in this, in a situation like this one, is that it's a newly constructed street, it's got everything that the city typically requires, including the sidewalk. If, for instance, this parking, well, the parking pad has to be 20 feet, but if the property line were back, say, at this blue marker, being at only 17 and a half feet, that, it would not be, you would not be able to fit your 20-foot parking pad if the garage was only 17 and a half feet away. But because the sidewalk is there, the whole point is to keep the back end of the truck or cars out of the sidewalk, so that it keeps a clear path. But that's, we want to be able to have the opportunity to provide administrative exception when absolutely necessary, when it just cannot be met. In addition, we also cover that each driveway must have a drive approach that meets city standards. Driveways in individual residences must measure a minimum of 14 feet in width and 20 feet in length. We notified the agencies, they had no comments for us. Any questions beyond what was been asked?
Questions?
Nope, I think you covered it.
Thank you very much.
Or what would be the action in this situation?
It would be a motion to approve and recommend the council...
Forward to...
Or deny, it depends on that recommendation to council.
Okay. So we'd need a motion to approve or deny, if we need to approve, forward it to council for review. And I would entertain a motion at this time.
I'll move to approve Title 18 text amendment and Title, or Title 18A text amendment, Title 18A, or Title 18 text amendment, and recommend approval to city council.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second?
Campy?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Latham?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Stephenson?
Yes.
So moved, item number five on this evening's agenda is new business. Is there any new business? Seeing none, we'll move to administrative or staff reports.
None.
None. Commissioner comments, anything for the good of the order? Seeing none, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.